Good evening. At seven o'clock, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Lansing City Council. And I am in the chair as the council has not yet elected a president for the year. So bear with me for a few minutes and I will take attendance. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in the quorum. Councilmember Spitzley is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone that we need to have the meditation in memory of today? Councilmember Hussein?
Just very quickly, I would like folks to remember the family and friends of, and it is an extensive, huge list of individuals across the city and really the region, but to remember the friends and family of Mr. Krishan Terrell. He tragically lost his life on New Year's Eve. I personally knew, a lot of folks know him by his artist name, Lakaz or Kaz. I knew him very well, went to school with him, and a number of my friends, very good friends with him, so our paths crossed quite often. But what an incredible individual. Just, you know, you very seldomly meet somebody that, the generosity, the sincerity, the authenticity is just literally oozing out of your pores, and that was him. And so, you know, we, the Lansing community, I think, lost just one of our most important, most incredible sons on New Year's Eve. So I really hope that folks keep him, his family, and his friends, and really the Lansing community, because again, what a loss, but keep everyone in your thoughts and prayers tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. As mentioned, Councilmember Spitzley is not here. She's dealing with her mother and some health issues. So if we could remember Councilmember Spitzley and her family at this time, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor Shore.
I was, and I was also going to mention Mr. Terrell, but certainly Councilman Hussein knew him a lot better, so I agree with everything you said. He was, he could have gone anywhere and he stayed here in Lansing, and that's appreciated. Also, I can't remember if we had, if I had done this already, so I'll do it again if I did, but I'd like us to remember Bishop David Maxwell, who passed away, but I can't remember if it was before the last council meeting of last year or not, but either way, I hope we'll keep him in our thoughts and prayers, as well as Robin Lewis and her family. Robin was certainly an important person with our school board, just got elected, has a school board. They both passed close to the end of the year last year, and certainly their families are still hurting, I'm sure, so we'd like to keep them in our prayers as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Please rise for a moment of meditation. Thank you.
I'd like allegiance to the United States of America and to the religion of one nation under God and indivisible, with the greatness of its throne.
Okay, so we are to, it's kind of special orders today for the election of the city council president and vice president. We have reported from the committee of the whole, a resolution to elect Councilmember Wood as president and Councilmember Garza as vice president. Recognize Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. I'm going to move the resolution, and the only thing I want to add in terms of what I said during committee of the whole is that when I said that it was alarming that we could potentially be in a position next year to have only one person up here that's ever served in leadership, that was not a discussion of that person, but rather the deficiency that that would mean for a body to only have one person. So I really, really wanted to see somebody in that vice president role have an opportunity to be mentored so that we can continue to build capacity in terms of leadership across the days. I was told actually by a few people that, ah, that sounded, that sounded bad. So it did come as, come off as artfully as I'd hoped, so I apologize. But with that being said, I will move the resolution.
All right. It's been moved. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Jackson.
Is it appropriate to move to divide the question?
I think it's a clearly dividable motion or resolution, so yes.
I would make that motion.
Okay. And I believe that does not need a vote to divide. So we, the question is then divided at the request of Councilmember Jackson. So we will first deal with the election of the city council president, Carol Wood. Is there further discussion on that portion of the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That motion carries with Councilmember Jackson voting nay. And now for the other portion of the resolution, the election of Councilmember Garza as vice president. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Congratulations, President Wood and Vice President Garza.
Thank you very much. Before we go into the approval of the minutes, I do want to just take a minute to thank Councilmember Hussein. We talked about Brian Daniels when, at our last meeting, and didn't have a lot to say about all the work that Councilmember Hussein did and his leadership this past year and in 2022. I want to thank you personally, Adam, for all the work that you did, the inclusiveness that you tried to make sure all council members were aware and afforded information as it came forth. Also want to thank you for all the meetings, because there were a number of more meetings in leadership that, from meeting with the city attorney to our staff, to meeting with the mayor on a regular basis, and I want to tell you how much we appreciate that, knowing especially your schedule and trying to make sure that those were all taken care of. So I want, want to thank you on behalf of the body, so thank you. Okay, that takes us into the approval of the printed council proceedings. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, President Wood. I would move the December 12, 2022 minutes as written.
You have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
And we have two comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember, or Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that over the holiday, there was some graffiti that was, that took place on McGuire Park sign, front and back. That was brought to several of us council members' attention, and I just want to let you know that multiple council members reached out to Brett Koschinsky, and the Parks Department is going to take care of that graffiti soon. So I just wanted to, to let people know that hopefully by the end of the week, you will see that changed.
Councilmember Jackson, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Just want to announce the return of our constituent contact meeting for the Fourth Ward. Every fourth Saturday of the month at Gregory's, we'll start there, that's 2510 North MLK. Ten o'clock in the morning, every fourth Saturday, we can discuss anything city of Lansing related, and I look forward to chatting. There is food available. Not saying I'm able to pay for it, unless you're the one or two people who come, and then we'll be able to work it out. But either way, I'm looking forward to starting it back up every fourth Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, and Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah, just very quickly, kind of along that same line, we will have our next Third Ward constituent contact meeting on January 14th. So we always meet, at least historically have met the second Saturday of each month, 10 to 12 noon. So we're going to actually meet at the Alfred Schmitt South Side Community Center, that is at 5825 Wise Road. Again, that is January 14th, the second Saturday, from 10 to 12 noon. We are set to have a number of our, I should say, like Lansing delegation in terms of representatives. We have a senator coming, but we really want to get into, you know, what is, first of all, we want a good, strong, solid legislative update, but also we want to have some discussions about what we can be partnering on in terms of some of our partners over at the Capitol. So we're going to have that conversation, and then the second half of that meeting is really going to be talking, I should say, it will be meant to address the priorities of Southwest Lansing, Southwest Lansing residents, and really what we want to see out of 2023. So we hope you're there for that very important conversation, again, January 14th, 10 to 12 noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? I just would like to announce that Rejuvenating South Lansing will commence their meetings on January 24th. That's the fourth Tuesday of the month at 6:30. They're also at the Alfred Schmitt South Side Community Center, and they're in the Sandy Allen Room. So we look forward, we'll have another chance to announce this before that meeting, but we want to invite, make sure that people are aware that that is starting back up again as well. So with that, I'll turn it back over. Oh, Councilmember.
All right. I'm so sorry. I have one more. We also have, so the Southwest Action Group typically meets on the first Tuesday of each month. Because of the holiday, and also because of council proceedings tonight, they decided to actually postpone, and they are set to meet next Tuesday. So that would be January 10th at 6:00 PM. Again, that's the Southwest Action Group, and they meet at the South Side Community Coalition, which is located at 2101 West Homes. So if you know of their work and you want to get involved in that work, we'd love to have you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have no announcements, so we'll go ahead to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to give us the details. And I see no one jumping up, so we will go ahead and move forward to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. The only legislative matter tonight is the election of the council president and vice president. So that's the blue sign-in sheet in the back. If you wish to speak on that, please jump up in the next 30 seconds or so. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First, I want to congratulate Madam President once again, Carol Wood. Excited to work with you once again. And congratulations to Councilman Garza as vice president. I didn't hear what Adam said in committee of the whole, but it's not alarming, it's exciting. Just teasing. And thank you to Adam Hussein, Councilman Hussein. We really did have a good year last year. I mean, certainly challenges, but you're an exceptional leader for this body, and I would have said that had it been your last, the end of last year, but I do want officially on the record for the world to hear that you were an exceptional president, so I thank you for your service. A few things. First, I wanted to let this body know, you'll see Jane sitting down here with our executive assistant role. We're making a few changes in my office, and one of them is going to be that Jane is going to take on the role of executive assistant. So you'll see her here in that role at council. She is, we're dividing up a good portion of the city. Jane's going to be focusing a lot on our internal workings, making sure the trains run on time. Shelby's going to continue to do a lot of our growth work. Mark is going to head up some things in my office, is going to continue to be citizen advocate and do a lot of work with the state legislature and the feds and a variety of other things. But in terms of executive assistant, we are turning that over to Jane, so she will be here for all of your council meetings and certainly your connection for whatever you need. So you can still go to Mark as needed with constituent issues if they come up, but if you want a direct liaison, Jane is certainly very aware and understanding of many of the issues that council goes through and council members go through with her extensive experience in a variety of communities. I want to congratulate all of our incredible city employees who helped out with our Code Blue. We had a weather event, everybody knows about it, and we had just an incredible group of folks from HRCS, from LFD Fire Department, from the Police Department, and then our agencies throughout our city that acted as both shelters and warming centers, Holy Cross Admin House and the Outreach Warming Center. They were able to really take care of anybody that was on the streets. The only people that we weren't were the people that refused to go, and our police still did wellness checks on them frequently. So I'm really excited and appreciative for everything they did. Thank you to our Parks Department. We actually had Guyer ready to go in case we needed backup for warming, and that wasn't necessary. And also, great job to our public service, who got our streets plowed very quickly. Certainly, we had to keep doing the main roads. Councilman Cost, I appreciate your communications on behalf of your constituents. So we do our best, and I think our folks did a great job, so I want to congratulate them. I did, you have in front of you, I guess, the press release. We did announce the ARPA dollars today. Letters went out last week, and we announced it today. So I thought it was a very fair distribution, geographically diverse, with equity, incredible programs in our city. I will remind everybody, we had $18 million in requests for $1.9 million, so we did our best to spread it around. We only had somewhere around 27 groups that were eligible. So eligibility was certainly the first condition, based on the COVID and the ARPA rules, but we were able to fund many programs. The press release you have in front of you also lists all the things that were funded. We focused on, on direct service and making sure that organizations were, were held whole from, or money was being paid back towards costs, as well as important items being served with our public, so you've got that information in front of you. Again, I want to thank our committee that handled that, and you've got the members listed as well. So I think that was a good effort, and I'm excited to see those dollars get out. We have to have contracts with each of these groups, and as soon as we do quickly, we'll have those dollars going out. I want to remind the public and council members that our online application for our Neighborhood Advisory Board grants will be available Monday, January 9th. Our Department of Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement will hold coffee chats about the Neighborhood Grant Series throughout January and February to prepare for the Neighborhood Advisory Board deadline of March 3rd. So available starting January 9th, deadline of the 3rd, and then our Neighborhoods Department will be doing a variety of work to help people to apply. Our HRCS Basic Human Service Grants are also available. They kick off December 9th, and their deadline is January 12th. So you got about a week if you're planning to apply. We certainly want to be able to serve our basic human needs. And then finally, our next participatory budget day is going to be January 14th, the same day as Councilman Hussein's constituent contact. Our breakfast and budgets will be at Tabernacle of David at 9:00 AM, so we're hoping that folks that go to your event will, will come to ours first and share their budget priorities and make their way to the Schmidt Center for Councilman Hussein's monthly Third Ward Contact, Constituent Contact. Hopefully, folks will be able to do both, because the Third Ward needs to have its say both in our budget and hear from you and our senators and whatever else you have. So I know Delisa was going to reach out to you if she hasn't already, but we want to make sure to get folks to both if possible. That's what I've got. Thanks, everyone. Happy, happy new year.
Mr. Mayor, for our January 9th Committee of the Whole, what we would like to do is to have a discussion on the grants. So if you could please provide us with the metric that you use for making the decision, the names of the organizations and the amounts requested, and then if council members have other questions after they take a look at this, we'll make sure that they, they get them. But we had agreed that that was one of the things that we were going to do after you made the award. Council has no decision-making in making that, we just want to make sure that it was clear to the public.
We can, we can provide the amounts that were requested, the amounts that were granted, and then we can provide all that.
Okay.
After that, I hope that people will send us any questions they have, but we'll, we'll provide you that information.
All right. Terrific. Thank you.
Okay. We are to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that's the only thing to discuss is the election of president and vice president. We have Farhan Sheikh Omar. Oh, you, okay. We have no public comment, so we are to, all the way to registration for city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet. And please jump up. I think almost everybody here has filled one out, though, and get with Jason to get that submitted if you wish to address city government-related matters. In the meantime, we are to reports of officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Okay, we have from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Those will be placed on file.
Nonprofit recognition for the capillary blue society.
City operations.
From the mayor, a grant acceptance for construction of the Ovation Performance Center from the Michigan Strategic Fund.
Ways and means.
And grant acceptance, FEMA building resilient infrastructure in communities grant.
Ways and means.
Communications and petitions, a notice from the Liquor Control Commission for a new Class C for RBM Properties LLC.
City operations.
And a notice from Liquor Control Commission of Smith Phillips, request for a new off-premise tasting room.
City operations.
Okay, we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Garza.
I'd like to excuse Councilman, or Councilwoman Spitzley.
You have a motion. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously.
And we are to additional remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks? This could be, well, maybe the fastest. Okay.
Remarks by the mayor.
All right.
Then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Nicholas Zandi followed by Kyle Richard. Folks have up to three minutes to discuss city-related items.
So my name is Nicholas Wayne Zandi, probably already know that, head of Decentralized Lansing and now officially candidate for Lansing City Council at large. Ironically, a position I want to see eliminated, which brings me to what I'm here to discuss tonight at this meeting, and that is my support for opening up the Lansing City Charter. I know that you've probably heard me talk about the at-large positions numerous times, ironically a position I'm running for, and I've, because at-large positions have historically left people out, whether it be by race or by class, due to a variety of reasons like Jim Crow and the Red Scare, which we should, which should have been bygone eras, but they still aren't, and we need to get on that and change our city charter, get rid of those at-large positions. And that's why I think that I want the people to vote yes on opening up the city charter, because it probably and most definitely will be on the ballot whenever it is, and I hope that it passes and that we can get these changes that are needed to open up representation throughout our city and take, take less, have less power from, to the elites and more power to the everyday working people. That's all I really want to say, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kyle Richard followed by Eric Ganaj.
Good evening, everyone. I've got some printouts for you today, if someone would be willing to come down and get them.
You can just have them there, we'll grab them later.
Thank you, Councilmember Spatafor. Appreciate that. The, what the dog doing? Kyle Richard, Fourth Ward, here to speak on the need for a publicly-owned 24/7 warming center in the city. As Mayor Shore hinted at in his remarks, you know, we had the bomb cyclone that happened, and during that, I went out with my sign and my bell, and I stood out in front of City Hall, trying to continue to raise awareness around this issue. And I was only able to stay out there for about an hour. It was really cold, it was very windy, holding the sign up was upper body workout that I was not prepared for. And after about an hour, I, my cheeks were windburned, and I had to, had to call it, call it quits. And I guess standing out there, it was, and with the Code Blue, when I looked at the Code Blue, it felt like, go somewhere else. It felt like, let's just fall back on the existing nonprofits and the existing religious groups. We're going to fall back on them, and they'll save us. But those groups are not accountable to us in any way, even though they're taking over half of, you know, not half, but a quarter of a million dollars from these ARPA funds. And so the idea that we have these shelters that aren't accountable to the people, I think that's not a great idea. And seeing City Hall empty that day, when, and then going home and seeing pictures on Facebook of people dying in the park, dying on the street, and we can say we did a great job on saving the people we did save, but that building was empty. And you can't tell me that this building doesn't have the security that we need. Like Grand Ledge is, is an outlying community, is, already has public warming centers. They already beat us to it. It's not, it's not a hard concept. I do want to spend the last seconds here, I heard something tonight that I found to be a little troubling. Mayor Andy Shore used the kind of common idiom of the trains running on time, and this is a known fascist dog whistle from the era of Benito Mussolini in Italy. Benito Mussolini was famously known for, not famously known, but mythically known for having had the trains run on time. Well, at least the trains are running on time, is, is a way of shorthand for austerity politics. It's shorthand for supremacy politics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Gaines followed by Mitch Rice.
Thank you. I'm here representing the group Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, and there'll be other speakers from the group Nation Outside regarding the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance that I know is under consideration or has been in the Ad Hoc Committee on Housing and Safety. And I'm here from Moms Demand Action to, to state our support for that ordinance, and we think Moms Demand Action is a group that believes in common sense, gun legislation. I work with a program called Be Smart that tells people about common sense actions adults can take to help protect kids from gun violence. And we believe that the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance is just a common sense action that actually helps address gun violence. And I just want to mention two facts, why we believe that. One is that, and this is in a presentation that Nation Outside does, but 20 to 30% of homeless people experiencing homelessness have admitted to committing minor and major crimes in order to, you know, solve their own housing issues and get some shelter. And we think it just makes really common sense to do whatever we can to remove the barriers to, to people who are formerly incarcerated before they become homeless, before they feel the need to commit violent acts or criminal acts. So we think that helps reduce gun violence. And finally, 63% of landlords in a study have admitted that past criminal history is a factor in their denying tendency. Yet, research, I know cited by HUD, indicates that past criminal history is not predictive of successful tendency. Those two things, you know, they don't, they don't jive. We just think it makes common sense to remove the prejudice against people who are formerly incarcerated and, and give them a chance, you know, a fair and equal playing field with those that haven't been incarcerated, to have a chance at stable housing, thus giving them a chance at having stable employment, thus providing an atmosphere where we're less likely to have gun violence, we believe. People in stable housing and stable employment, we just think it makes a ton of sense. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitch Rice, followed by Adam Grant.
Good evening, Mayor Andy Shore and city council members. I am representing Nation Outside. Last year, in 2022, the city council's Ad Hoc Committee on Housing and Safety was working on a Fair Chance Housing Ordinance. We at Nation Outside view housing as a fundamental human right. human right. Passing the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance would demonstrate the city of Lansing is willing to support people who are committed to rectify their mistakes, redefine themselves, and make meaningful contributions to the community. People who have served their time and seek to provide for themselves and their families face significant barriers in finding adequate housing. This ordinance, if you, when you get back to reconsidering it, would give previously incarcerated people the opportunity to find safe and affordable housing within the city limits. According to research, housing helps reduce recidivism and build safer communities. People who have stable housing are more likely to maintain employment, seek more education, and less likely to engage in any criminal activity. Landlords and rental management companies often deny leasing to anyone with a criminal record. As individuals complete their sentences and return to the community, it's only right that they have a fair chance at a fresh start in a safe environment. The Fair Chance Housing Ordinance allows people with criminal records to complete an initial screening process before disclosing their conviction history. Landlords retain the right to conduct background checks after a conditional lease is offered, and to deny applicants whose record would impact public safety, property, or other tenants. However, people would be given the chance to offer evidence of rehabilitation prior to the final denial by the landlord. We ask that the city of Lansing make it a priority to adopt a Fair Chance Housing Ordinance in 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would note that the council rules do not permit applause and other demonstrations at this point. Adam Grant is next, followed by William Walker.
Adam Grant with Nation Outside. I don't have any statistics, I have a story. I've experienced the denials. My name's Adam Grant. I'm the Executive Director of A brighter Way. I have nearly an 800 credit score, and I can't get the house above my mother-in-law. The apartment above my mother-in-law, because I served time in prison for a bank robbery that I committed in 1993. These are not, I don't even think the ordinance goes far enough. Let me say that first. Because I've, I work in Ypsilanti, and I see how these ordinance can be bastardized and how they can be misused. Because one of the things that happens down there is that you have management companies who aren't based out of Ann Arbor or Ypsilanti so that they can do the business according to the laws in Ohio, or whatever the case may be. The fact is, we're talking about people's lives. We're talking about their livelihood. And anybody who wants to talk about public safety needs to understand that nobody is going to be safe if people don't have housing. They do what they need to do in order to find a place to stay. There aren't all-night laundromats like there were when I was homeless, where I could stand behind a laundromat and stay warm underneath a vent. People are going to break into houses. They're going to do these things. I robbed a bank. What do you think the likelihood of me doing something similar to that would be if I don't have housing? How am I supposed to put my life together if I don't have housing? I've been a resident of Lansing since 1983, and the only reason I have a place to stay right now is because my wife's name is on the lease. And every year when we renew our lease, they say, just stay on as a resident. So these aren't just, these aren't just political issues. This isn't a political football. These are people's lives. This is everybody's life. This is not just somebody who made a mistake's life. This is everybody who's sitting up there who can be affected by this. We have to think bigger about these things. We have to think holistically about these things, and we have to think about people as people. This is not just somebody who is, has been in prison. This is not just a parolee. This is a person who's been formerly incarcerated. So statistics are important, but so are stories. And think about that when you're voting on something like this. If I, as a white male, experienced this in, in the city of Lansing, what do you think the odds are of somebody, a person of color, who's done this? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is William Walker, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
My name is William Walker, formerly incarcerated, returning citizen. I spent 35 years in prison, and I came back to my hometown, Lansing. I've never seen so many deserted houses, red tags, in my life in this city. The last time I was in this room, Mayor Max Merningham was here. The situation is, we have individuals coming out of prison who need a chance, a fair chance. I watched as everybody turned to the United States flag and said, liberty and justice for all. As we sit back and think about discriminating against the individuals who have felonies, should not we include, well, how about Jesus Christ? How about any of the people? Well, let's look at Paul, the individual who wrote a large percentage of the Bible. He was a murderer. So we can eliminate him, but maybe, maybe we can also eliminate an individual who had 25 years in prison, Nelson Mandela. He was indeed a trouble, trouble causer. He was put in prison for causing trouble. Them four years out of prison, he was the president. Let us give people a fair chance. If I am wrong, it's easy to prove. You members can go out, live in the streets for four days. You can't do it. And conduct your jobs. Maybe it's time that we open our minds, realize what that flag stands for. The people who made that flag, the people who made that flag possible, were traitors, and all you have to do is ask the king. They committed criminal acts to make this flag possible. And now, everybody who's a criminal, we don't want them around. I think it's time that we rethink where we stand. I think it's time that we realize that if a person doesn't have a house to live in, when Michigan is 18 degrees, 16 degrees, he might want to find someplace, including going through somebody's window. There was a time many years ago, one of my classmates was walking the streets. He had a mental issue. But in the wintertime, he would create some small misdemeanor so he could get the warmth of a jail cell. Maybe it's time that we look at things as they are. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Ashia Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Farhan Sheikh Omar. This time last year, I wrote an article that was published by the Lansing City Pulse. I called that, I wrote that article to warn you guys about the housing crisis in the city. In fact, I named the article Lansing Residents Deserve Safe Homes. And in our article, I stated that lives are at stake. Six months after I wrote that article, a toddler died in the city. A toddler who was living in a house that didn't pass inspection, that wasn't licensed. Fast forward to a couple months after that, we kept coming to the city, to you guys, to open up a 24/7 warming center, a place where people can come and feel warm and feel safe. You guys said no. You guys, it's like talking to a wall whenever I come here. It's literally a waste of my time, quite frankly. The only reason why I come here is because I care about people. But talking to you guys is literally a waste of my time, because I know nothing is going to change. Just this past storm that we just had on the 23rd of December, a man and his dog died in a car due to carbon, carbon monoxide. You bragged about code blue. What the hell does that even mean, code blue? Usually when a, when government, when a government declares an emergency, they set aside funding. They set aside help. They open up places. You just declared an emergency. If the governor declares an emergency, she can deploy the National Guard. She sets aside funding. When the president declares an emergency, he sends in FEMA. You got to take action, Andy. You don't just declare code blue, code yellow, code brown. It doesn't mean nothing. Literally, it means nothing. I looked at your code blue. It's literally a waste. One of the things that you had was, it says, anyone in need of a place to go can walk. Walk. You guys all saw what was happening outside. Is that a condition? Anyone could walk in? Walk? You couldn't even walk. None of you would be willing to walk. Forget walking, it was hard to drive. Yeah, I want people to walk. That was very inconsiderate. What you did wasn't enough. It's not enough. You're not housing the poor. You're not housing the felons that are coming back, rejoining society. You're not housing those without even a record? What exactly are you guys doing? What exactly are you guys good for? Come on. Lives are at stake. Stop playing games. Take care of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ashia Wilson, followed by Tay Gant.
Hi, my name is Asia Wilson. I'm here on behalf of Nation Outside. Little bit of background on Nation Outside. We're a grassroots organization made up of formerly incarcerated individuals. We work on policy reform, Fair Chance Housing, employment rights, voter education, things like that. So we're here on behalf of Fair Chance Housing, because housing is not really fair. And I really haven't had a fair chance since I've been home from incarceration. I've had a tough time gaining employment. You know, thank God for Nation Outside, because they've given me a chance. But outside of that, I'm having a hard time with housing myself. I run into other people like me. You know, when we do get into the door, as far as like working a job, you guys want the tax dollars. We're taxpayers just like you guys. You know, it's, it's hard. And, and most of us are parents. I have a six-year-old son. And just the barriers that I face inside of jails traumatizing, is traumatizing also when I come home. People need two things to feel a sense of belonging in the community, and that's employment and that's housing. How do you expect people to rehabilitate without having either? You know, any human is going to take care of something that they feel like belongs to them. And if I come out from jail, if I don't feel like I belong here, how can you ask me not, not to violate the community? I just feel like Fair Chance Housing needs to be considered. Just, you know, like everybody else has said, you guys take a step from there. And, and, you know, we're people. And look at the fact that we're human. We need places to live without giving such a hard time. It doesn't take away from the fact that we have made, you know, bad choices or whatever, but we are still human at the end of the day. So we're asking for the Fair Chance Housing to be considered in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tay Gant, followed by Mark and Lois Polano.
Good evening, Mayor Shore, council members. First, Happy New Year, right? Some of you guys are looking down. I think this is going to be a good year, because this is going to be the year that the city of Lansing passes Fair Chance Housing, right? This is going to be the year when Lansing steps up to protect people that are discriminated against legally right now, right? As a formerly incarcerated African-American man, right? A resident of Lansing and a voter. Don't forget that. And I'm a voter, who spent 20 years, right? 20 years in the Michigan Department of Corrections, came out and changed my entire life. I'm a business owner here in the city. I'm an author. I'm a father. I have a five-year-old. And I'm the Director of Nation Outside, right? Statewide organization, doing well, still denied housing. No, absolutely not. From a conviction from 1994. The problem that we face, right? This is the problem that we face. When you do a criminal background check, it only judges you based on the past. It looks back 30 years and said, you made a mistake. We're going to judge you for the rest of your life based on this 30-year-old mistake. At some point, we, as a community, have to make the decision that people can change. Either people can change, or they can't, right? But we have evidence, right? In this room, of how people can do decades and change their whole life, but we're still punishing those same people. And in punishing them, right? We're punishing other people, and we're pushing people into the margins, back to crime, back to recidivism, and then you complain that the community is not safe. There is an inconsistency here, right? You can't hold them both. If you want to save community, allow access for people. Allow people to be able to get somewhere to live, to be able to get a job, because I'm telling you, if you've got somewhere to live, you'll keep your job, you'll be trying to go back to college, and you'll become a productive member of the community. That's what Asia was talking about. We're pushing people away from buying into our community by locking them out. If we lock them out, why should they care if the community is dirty? Why should they care if people are shooting? Think. It's simple. Get people access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lois Polano, I think is the one that's going to speak, followed by Michael Mercer.
Hi, I'm Lois Polano, and I'm here with the support of my husband, Mark Polano. We are from the First Ward. I'm the Executive Director of a statewide nonprofit, Citizens for Prison Reform. We primarily assist families who have incarcerated loved ones, but we also support and assist those who have returned to our communities. And we assist families who are dealing with their loved ones who have returned to this community. I can also tell you from my own personal experience that I had a loved one who had a record. And finding housing was extremely difficult. It was one of the most difficult things that we had to do. I want to mention two things that I think weren't brought up, and that is, it's not only people who do time in prison that have a record. So we have people here in our community that never even go to prison, who have misdemeanors and even felonies. They might do time in the local county jail. And by the way, we're about jail reform as well within this region. So what I'm saying is, it's not just people that have been to prison that are impacted. It's people with any kind of a record. And that could end up being one of you or your loved ones. And I think the other point that I would like to bring up is, there have been some cities who have passed this ordinance, but we would love to see Lansing jump on board and be one of the early runners of this ordinance. The current practices that the city of Lansing has in place are harmful, and we are asking for you to take this ordinance up in the coming months to address it. It would actually create a safer and a more equitable community, and that is what my husband and I want to see. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Michael Mercer. I do also want to acknowledge that we have a couple of written communications in support of the Fair Housing, Fair Chance Housing Ordinance from Mitch and Candy Rice, as well as Mark and Lois Polano.
I've been noticing lots of people driving without any lights on, front or in the back of their vehicles on the south side, since I happen to be from the whole area, driving to the Myers and grocery stores and all that on the south side. And I don't appreciate people out driving during this time of day when there are no people out driving during this time of day when there's no sun out and can't even see them when you get close to them, and I'd like to see the police go out there and keep, you know, you know, track those roads out there on the south side, because I'm sick and tired of seeing people not driving with no lights on, and who knows, they might get in an accident, not able to see what they're coming towards, and I know on Grand Ledge, it happened back in the past, I didn't realize when my lights were, you know, burned out in the front and on the passenger side, I got a fix-it ticket. Why don't you guys give those people fix-it tickets, you know, here in the City of Lansing, it's not just on the south side, I'm sure it's elsewhere in the City of Lansing, but you guys, the police are just, to my opinion, too afraid to pull people over now, where it's not, you know, in Eaton County, and I don't see people driving out in the, you know, Ingle County where I'm from, in the Delhi area, and plus, another story, I brought up years ago about, you know, the beginning of the, you know, council, the brand-new year, I'd like to see, and hopefully you guys are doing it this year, and that's not pay council members if they not show up at a council meeting like they do down near Battle Creek. You remember that, Carol, when I brought that up? You're the only one that's here, back when I brought it up in the past. Keep track of their, you know, tenants, and if they don't show up, don't get paid, and if they want to get paid, they need to show up.
Thank you, that was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you, and with that, we are adjourned.